Did our meeting come to order for him for the 20? Now, I stand to complete. I'm glad you lead us to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. I think Mr. Keith is joining us, Attorney is joining us on the phone. Mr. Keith?
Alright, we're live.
Okay, Mr. Jim? Our next approved of the agenda, Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the agenda.
Board, you've heard his recommendation, I need a motion.
I make that motion.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, say it. Mr. Austin, Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, three items that I would like to ask the board to please consider at executive session. The three items are early graduation requests, property contract matter, and personnel contract matters. Early graduation requests, property contract matter, and personnel contract matter. The board please consider those at executive session. Also, I want to remind board members that CSI and APSI, CSI information is in your packet for your review. And now that we've got that business out of the way, I want to say we've got a special day today, a special week, actually. This is School Board Appreciation Week, and so we are very excited to be able to honor our board members today. I brag on our board members all the time that we've got an amazing group of school board members in the Southern County Schools and as superintendent, like I said, there's no way that myself or our principals, assistant principals, teachers, staff, anyone can do their job as effectively as they could without supported school board members. And I want to say that all five of our board members had students' best interests at heart, teacher's best interests at heart, and greatly appreciate all of your hard work. Let's give them a big round of applause.
Thank you.
And with that being said, we've got a special treat today. Ms. Wendy Michael from Fernando Hills Elementary School Principal is here, and you brought some students with you.
I did, I did. I brought our choir this morning as a special thank you to our school board.
Great, great. One of his wives.
For Mr. Fred Rogers, a champion and advocate for children everywhere. The numbers one and four three represent something important to him. They represent I love you. One in the letter I, four in the letters love, and three in the letters you. We would like to thank the school board members for being a champion and advocate for the children at DeSoto County. One, four, three. One, four, three. One, four, three. Oh, you see. That one and four is three. One, four, three. I love you. Four, three. I love you. Oh, you see. Oh, you see. And four is three. I just want me. I just want you. Oh, we. I love you. Every one and every single. One, four, three. I love you. One, four, three. I love you. Oh, you see. Oh, you see. That one and four is three. Wherever you go, wherever you go. Oh, you see. Oh, you can't. Oh, me. One, four, three. I love you. One, four, three. I love you. Oh, you see. Oh, you see. One, four, three. You, you, you. We appreciate you. You are great. We appreciate you. Yeah, you really great. You make us so happy with nothing you say. Oh, we appreciate you. You, you, you. You, you, you. We appreciate you. You are neat. We appreciate you. Yeah, you get me beat. You make us so happy with nothing you say. Oh, we appreciate you. You, you, you. You, you, you. We appreciate you. You are neat. We appreciate you. Yeah, you really cool. You make us so happy with nothing you say. Oh, we appreciate you. We appreciate you. Oh, we appreciate you. You, you, you.
Thank you, that was awesome. Let's give them another big round of applause. Thank y'all for coming in. I hate y'all having missed class, though. Is it okay? It's okay, alright. So, thank y'all for coming in, and Fernando Hills parents, so we greatly appreciate y'all being here and family members today. We know you want to catch up with your children and family, so if y'all want to, Fernando Hills parents, if you'd like to exhibit them this time, that'll be fine, then we'll get off to business in here in just a minute. Thank y'all for coming out today.
Thank you so much.
Great job, students. Thank you, Ms. Michael. Appreciate it. Awesome, great treat there. Now, we have, we have a teacher that we want to recognize, and then we have several students here today in attendance that we are looking forward to recognizing, so we have more good news to share. We'll start, I'll ask Principal Chris Perkins of Lewisburg High School, please come forward this time.
Good morning. That's a tough act to call. Happy School Board Appreciation Week. So, today I'm here to recognize Coach Cagle, he's our baseball coach, athletic director, and now head football coach at Lewisburg High School. And just a few weeks ago, he was recognized by the AVCA at their conference as the national coach of the year. From my understanding, there are three categories, small, medium, and large. You have to have at least one nomination from another coach in your, in your region, and he got that, possibly a coach out of Stillwater, Oklahoma. And to our knowledge, he's the first DeSoto County baseball coach to receive this award in the decade or so that those coaches have been attending AVCA. So, he also had the state recognition last year for coach of the year, but also on a national level, he received that award just a few weeks ago. And so, we're here to recognize him for that and present that award to him today. Coach Cagle?
Ask our district athletic director. Great, congratulations. This time we have a group of state champions that we would like to break it out. I'll ask Principal Jason Witt from Center Hill High School, so please come forward this time.
Thank you, Mr. Charleston. Thank you, school board, for allowing us to come in here and recognize these athletes. And since they won a state championship, our dance team actually went to nationals, and they placed second in their game day live competition. Came about a half a point away from being first. I was able to go down there and experience that with them and just the laser focus they have while they're down there. And a lot, a big shout out to their sponsor, Ms. Jones, their coaches, and their parents. When they get down there, those dancers don't have much, any contact at all with their parents. And just the way the parents are bought into that program is amazing, so. First up, Destiny Van Buren. Malan Galindembe. Amira Winden. Kamora Greer. Caitlin Howell. Makaya Cook. Dorial Row. Janaya Woods. Pyrenesia Edwards. Morgan Cunningham. Makala Powell. Morgan Skorock. Jade Fletcher. Kamora Royston. Jaten Baker. Kimberly Ongwood. Damaya Walker. Brittany Wright. Kendra Alexander. Kristen Nixon. Georgia Jordan. Mariah Kaladun. Kaya Taylor. Mila London.
Great job. I'd like to get a picture of the group, so if y'all could all come up, and then we'll get a picture record. If your parents, if you'd like to come up to get a picture while we're doing this, they'll bring them up. And then we'll move on to our next part of our student recognition, our 30-plus seniors. And we've got Center Hill High School here, so I ask Principal Jason Witt, please come forward again.
Center Hill put me to work today. That's a good, that's a good thing. Alright. Iris Loyah. Catherine Bohice. Addison Brawley. Kyle Chin. Marco Finley II. Joshua Gorham. Malcolm Hamlin. Cooper Medlin. Elizabeth Snyder. Hector Solis. And Addison Williams. Thank y'all.
Would you get the Center Hill ACT students, please come up and get a pretty photo. And parents, welcome. Great, congratulations. And this time we'd like to recognize our 30-plus seniors from Olive Branch High School.
Good morning, school board members. Head School Board Appreciation Week, thank you for all you did for the kids and faculty of the Southern County Schools. And obviously, thank you for recognizing these outstanding students from Olive Branch High School that achieved 30-plus on their ACT. First, Jaden Moos. Alan Culver. Callie Curran. Logan Durling. Eric Goodaway. Oliver Hicks. Mario Hawkins. Corey Jeffries. Emma Marriott. Caroline Carey. And Leah Steen.
Alright, would you get all the Olive Branch students for a picture? And parents, please come up if you want to take pictures. Great, congratulations. Congratulations again to Coach Cagle and to our dance team state champions and our 30-plus seniors. I want to commend you on all your hard work and all that you do to represent your school in such an outstanding fashion, also to Southern County Schools. Also, I want to thank the parents and family members, since they all have our school board members, we appreciate your support in Southern County Schools. Now, we are about to get started with the business of the meeting, so if you'd like to leave, now would be a great time to do that.
Superintendent. Thank you, goodness.
Thank you. I'm surrounding myself with great people, I'm proud of it, that's how it works.
Mr. Keith, you still with us? All right, we have our attorney's report. Thank you, no report. New consent agenda, A through OOO. Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the consent agenda.
Board, do we have a motion? Do we have a second? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. So to keep the agenda, Mr. Keith, Williams. Architectural Services, Allen and Hochul, for heat and air replacement at Oak Grove.
Yes, sir, we're requesting permission from the board entering into a contractual agreement for architectural services with Allen and Hochul for the Oak Grove Central Elementary HVAC replacement project.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the use of architectural services of Allen and Hochul for the HVAC replacement at Oak Grove Central Elementary.
You've heard Mr. Austin's recommendation, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. Permission to advertise for bids for heat and air at Oak Grove Central Elementary, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir, request permission from the board to advertise for bids on the HVAC replacement project at Oak Grove Central Elementary School.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for HVAC replacement at Oak Grove Central Elementary.
You heard Mr. Austin's recommendation, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
One second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. Bids for flooring project on Olive Branch High School, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir, we had eleven bids that were received, and it is my recommendation to accept the lowest and the best bid from Barnes and Brower.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the lowest and best bid from Barnes and Brower for the flooring project at Olive Branch High School.
Heard Mr. Austin's recommendation, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. Contractual agreement between Barnes and Brower, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir, requesting permission from the board to enter into a contractual agreement with Barnes and Brower for the Olive Branch High School flooring project.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with Barnes and Brower for the flooring project at Olive Branch High School.
Heard Mr. Austin's recommendation, board, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. Have bids for flooring project on South Haven High School, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir, we had nine bids that were received, and it is my recommendation to accept the lowest and the best bid from RKA Construction.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation, and forward.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the lowest and best bid for RKA Construction for the flooring projects.
Heard Mr. Austin's recommendation, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. Contractual agreement with RKA Construction.
Yes, sir, we're seeking permission from the board to enter into a contractual agreement with RKA Construction for the flooring project at South Haven High School.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with RKA Construction for the flooring project at South Haven High School.
Board, do we have a motion?
Make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. Who do you get the heart of this turn of page? Bids for furniture and classroom additions, Center Hill Elementary School.
Yes, sir, we have four, and we submitted bids, and it's my recommendation to accept the lowest and best bid from furniture specialists.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the lowest and best bid from furniture specialist for the furniture for the classroom additions at Center Hill Elementary School, Center Hill High School, Lake Como Elementary School.
Heard Mr. Austin's recommendation, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. We got Mr. Williams with bids for kitchen renovation, Hope Sullivan.
Yes, sir, we received three bids, and it is my recommendation to accept the lowest and the best bid from Murphy &amp; Sons for the kitchen renovation at Hope Sullivan Elementary.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the bids for the kitchen renovations at Hope Sullivan Elementary.
Do we have a motion, board?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. Contractual agreement for Murphy &amp; Sons, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir, requesting permission from the board to enter into a contractual agreement with Murphy &amp; Sons for the kitchen renovation project at Hope Sullivan Elementary.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with Murphy &amp; Sons for the kitchen renovations at Hope Sullivan Elementary.
Board, do we have a motion?
Make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, ayes have it. Bids, Mr. Williams, bids for notebooks for grades two and five.
Yes, sir, we have five vendors that have approved to participate, and it's my recommendation to accept the lowest and the best bid from Hyper Tech for the notebooks that will be used across the district.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the lowest and best bid from Hyper Tech for the notebooks for grades two to five.
Board, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
There are Williams' request for proposed ELL data management program.
Yes, sir, RFPs were opened on January the twelfth for the purchase of ELL data, A ELL data management program for the district. It's my recommendation to accept the highest submission from Curriculum and Associates.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the curriculum instruction from, was it Curriculum and Associates?
Yes, sir.
Curriculum and Associates for the request for proposal for the ELL data management program.
Board, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. Request to purchase vehicle for the purchasing department, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir, the surplus department is requesting permission to purchase a van. This vehicle will be used to transport surplus products across the district, throughout the district.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve request to purchase the vehicle for the purchasing department.
Do we have a motion, board?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. Personnel, Mr. Alexander.
Yes, sir. Point, pages one, recommendations, pages four and seven, personnel changes. Page eight is a memo for myself, board approve over the five days, forty hours, permission to pay between February the twenty-first, twenty-four, and March eighth, twenty-four, this being a building school closing. Delay or dismissed, thirty-eighteen, the weather conditions, and would be for less than two hundred thirty-eight quarters only. Page nine is a summer hourly maintenance, hourly rate of pay, we're requesting the board to approve to pay summer hourly maintenance employees thirteen dollars per hour, this would begin May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Page ten is a request for a position overlap and paid for training purposes, Ms. Tishwire, accounting manager, for the Lake Comer High School bookkeeper position. She's requesting that employee be paid in addition to the current staff member that she'll be replacing, the training will take place from March fourth through March the twenty-eighth, and the rate would be eighteen eighty-nine an hour. Page eleven is a request for a position overlap for training purposes, this is from Melissa Green, our director, our MIS. And this is for MIS supervisor of ADA, discipline and personnel position, central services, she's requesting that employee be paid in addition to current staff member, she'll be replacing, the training will be from March the eighteenth through March the twenty-eighth, and the rate is twenty-eight thirty-three per hour. Page twelve is a request for a position overlap and paid for training purposes, and that also from Ms. Green, this is for MIS supervisor of records, state indicators and state reporting position, central services. She's requesting employee be paid in addition to current staff member that she'll be replacing, this training will be held from April eighth to April the nineteenth at the rate of twenty-eight thirty-three per hour. Page thirteen is a request for additional unit, this will be two additional assistant principal units for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And page fourteen is a request for additional, additional unit, this is for part-time bus trainer at the transportation department, this will start February twenty-first. And then page fifteen through seventeen is an MS area coordinated job description, only thing that's changed is member requirements are changed from free year as an MS coordinator, Southern County Schools to two years.
Mr. Austin, you've heard these personnel managers, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve personnel as presented.
Board, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Residency appeal, Mr. Collins.
Yes, sir, I have one item to discuss in this session.
Thank you. Mr. Finney, discipline.
Yes, sir, we have Steve, this one, now to address the same discussion.
Thank you.
At this time, I need a motion for consideration of a closed session to determine whether the board should enter into the executive session for the following matters. Student matters regarding early graduation, property contract matter, personnel contract matter, a residency appeal, and a student discipline appeal.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Trace will come back and let you know if we stay in an executive session.
In both, please, in your part.
Ma'am.
May we have both, please, all in favor?
Okay, we need a vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it.